You are watching Access La Porte County Channel ninety seven. Coming up next is a December twentieth, twenty twenty two meeting of the Michigan City Common Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access Laporte County dot org.
Today is December twentieth and our regular second and last regular council meeting, well, regular council meeting of the year. If you would silence your phones and we will stand for the pledge, pledge allegiance of to flag in the uh a moment silent prayer. I know we have another councilman here, so we'll just give it one moment and then we'll do the um roll call. As we're all getting our treats, thank you um to the clerk's office or attorney and his wife and all those folks for all the treats. For the public that's here, there's treats up up front, feel free to take some if you would like one um and we'll go from there. So Ms. Nyla on the roll call.
Mr. Dabney. Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Mr. Matt.
Present.
Ms. Deitch.
Present.
Mr. Don Preszulinski.
Present.
Mr. Paul Preszulinski.
He'll be here momentarily.
I know he's here.
Yeah.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
Mr. Jagus.
Present.
And Ms. Tillman.
Present.
We have nine present and no one absent.
All right, thank you. We will move on to the approval of the minutes, approval of hybrid Zoom, December sixth meeting, twenty twenty two. I have a motion.
Motion approved.
Second, we have a motion by councilman uh Bryant Dabney and a second by councilman Don Privilinski, Ms. Nyla upon the vote.
Mr. Dabney.
Hi.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Ms. Deitch.
Hi.
Mr. Don Preszulinski.
Hi.
Mr. Simmons.
Hi.
Ms. Jagus.
I will abstain since I was not here.
Mr. Paul Preszulinski. Oh, we saw. And Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
We have seven in favor, one abstained. And they pass.
Thank you, thank you. Are there any um? Are there any reports of standing committees? Any reports of standing committees? Any reports of standing committees? Um Finance Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. Um The city finance committee did not meet due to that there were no claims to report. I would also like to provide um the Riverboat Statement of Cash Position Fiscal Year to Date, twelve sixteen twenty twenty two. Ending balance, four million, three hundred sixteen thousand, two hundred nineteen dollars, seventy five cents.
Awesome, thank you. There were no claims um for today's docket, so um we have nothing to vote on. Are there any reports of special or select committees? Any reports of special or select committees? All right, with that being said, are there any reports from the mayor or other city officers? Any reports? All right, um any petitions?
There are no petitions this evening.
All right, thank you. Communications.
In accordance with ordinance number four by three eight, an extraordinary report was received in the clerk's office on December fifth, twenty twenty two regarding an accident that occurred with the MCPD vehicle on December second, twenty twenty two.
Awesome, thank you. Um Our first resolution by title only?
A resolution by title only approving the commitment of city's local match for NERC raise grant to construct the Marquette Greenway tra- uh trail. This is introduced by Mr. Dabney and Ms. Deitch.
Any comments from the sponsors? Any comment? Yes, Mr. Dabney.
Um I know we have uh Shannon Easton in the the room as well. Um I was gonna wait to see if she had any comments first. Uh but just talking about the singing sands trail and what we're trying to do here. Uh The singing sands trail has been going on for, I mean, so many years, uh I can't even count. We have been trying to to get this project done uh with that trail for many, many years and now we have a a chance at some grant funding. Um in the city, it would end up having to put about twenty-three percent um of the the match to this grant and um. It's it when I first saw it, it looked like a big number coming from the city. Um one point eight million dollars or or so. But with the grant funding in in that that's going on, this is this is a lot of money out there on the table. And I feel like we can take this chance now to get this done, kind of get this thing off the table. I mean, it has been around for a long time. Um so I think we we need to take advantage of this because the next time that these type of grant funds uh could be uh up to apply for is a couple of years down the line, uh three years down the line if I'm not mistaken. And what could possibly happen in that time, paving and the things that you need to do uh for a trail like this is obviously gonna continue to skyrocket. So I think with the chance that we have to get this this grant funding, um even though when I first saw it, I thought that was a a big match coming from the city. But in my mind, I say it's it's time that we, you know, make this investment right now to get this thing off the table so so we can avoid those skyrocketing costs and take advantage of this grant funding. Uh that's coming from NERC so we can get this done. So this is a a resolution that we put forward here and and Angie is the uh co-sponsor on this as well. And we're talking about, you know, just get this done. Um get the funding taken care of. There's already six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars that's approved for next year. So in in a sense, it'll be about another one point two million dollars or so that we'll be putting toward the funding to get this done. Uh but if we do not do this now, these grant funds that are out there um will move on to another community. And like I said, we'd be able to apply again in another three years or so, which by that time, who knows what it's gonna cost uh to finish off these different things to get this done and like I said, in terms of paving and other things that are happening, uh construction costs, whatever it may be. So this is why I I put my name on this. I want to get this done right now. Let's take advantage of this grant fund, this grant funding and move forward.
Thank you. And thank you, Councilman um Dabney and and um I know that we had included this in um our ready proposal that we submitted to uh the Northwest Indiana Forum and it didn't make it through, but um the connectivity across the state is important. I think that um there'll be other monies that will be available if with doing this, we might be able to find some other matches to help in the future. Any comments from the public? Anything you you would like to add, um Shannon? Appreciate you being here. Sorry, we put that to just to.
Good evening, Council Shannon Easton Assistant Park Superintendent and Trail Manager for Singing Sands. So I just wanted to quickly um let the council know that this isn't our normal federal highway funding that goes through NDOT and then through NERC. That comes around every three years. You apply for it. You're not guaranteed that you're going to get it. This comes directly from Federal Highway um to NERC. It avoids the NDOT process. It's um a new grant that NERC is not really familiar with, so it's moving along very quickly and they're trying to learn it as they go. So as uh Mr. Dabney mentioned, this is an opportunity for the city to leverage six point three million dollars to complete um three point eight miles of the singing sands, which is our segment of the Marquette Greenway. And we did receive some ready funding through the Northwest Indiana Forum that um NERC had and and some negotiations for the city's match. They were able to throw a little more of that our way to lower our match. It started at three point five and now it's down to one point eight. If the city doesn't move forward and waits for the federal highway, um that's in three years that they'll put out a call for funding, we would have to apply at another two years of that. You're looking at five to six years for us to do construction. So I know it's a lot of money and I know everyone needs money right now with inflation, um but it's a great opportunity. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Oh, and just to answer your question, two thousand and three was our first grand award for singing sands. So we're going on twenty years.
Let's take it. It's a labor love. Um question, um Councilman uh Don.
Yeah, where's the uh city's portion of the money coming from?
So the six 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 seven hundred was approved in our twenty twenty three budget. Um the balance of that, that's a question for the controller. Is the controller here?
Yeah, since the controller's here this evening, I'd like to know where the rest of the money's coming from.
And then keep in mind, this is a two-year process.
It's twenty twenty four too, right?
Yeah, the resolution is just committing the funding. Um the twenty twenty three portion's already committed in our budget, so twenty twenty four will be coming back for an ordinance to commit the one point two.
Yes, Controller Hoffmaster.
Well, we really haven't had that argument yet where the money will be coming from. The six hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred was budgeted in the Riverboat for the twenty twenty three budget. So we'll be bringing the balance forth to the council for the twenty twenty four budget.
Okay, um Controller Hoffmaster, how much was that? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
The six hundred sixty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars for in the twenty twenty three budget is budgeted in the Riverboat.
Okay. And then how about the remaining money? Didn't you say there was some?
That'll be brought forth in the twenty twenty four budget. So we haven't really started looking at that budget yet to see where um any of the funds can be available for that.
And and one thing that I was gonna suggest, because I know that the city of La Porte received funding for their trails through the Healthcare Foundation. And that grant opens up in a couple of weeks and ends um in February. And maybe this is an opportunity to get part of the one point whatever million dollars from the Healthcare Foundation. Um because um the last last year, there were several almost a million dollars, I think, given to the city of La Porte for their trails. So there's your opportunity to maybe get that one point whatever down to something significantly smaller. Yeah, um any other questions from for? Yes, um Councilman Paul, did you have your getting your light on? Yes.
Um Shannon, uh where exactly is this connecting and then going to? Is it is it connecting out there by Liberty Trail?
Yeah, so it starts where phase two and it'll go through Friendship Gardens, um cross Highway twelve on the north side of Amtrak and it stops at the city's civil city boundary line at El Portal. La Porte County is picking up the last segment to the state line. Um they're engineering that now. They're close to the end of their design and engineering.
Okay.
Yep, and then we see funding to ready for that too. That was one of the projects that was approved um through the ready grant. Yes, Councilwoman Tillman.
This is directed uh to Controller Hoffmasters. So due to that, we already have it budgeted in the twenty twenty three for the six hundred sixty-six thousand and that one point two per possibly with additional funding, would you be able to give us a projection or what is to anticipate where those funds is gonna come from in twenty twenty four?
It will probably be in the Riverboat budget.
Thank you.
Thank you. And any additional comments for?
Yeah, I just wanted Shannon to explain because I feel like I want to jump on to explain it, but I might fall over the words. The reason that we are making this commitment now or we need to make this commitment now, can you explain that? I wanted to.
Yeah, so two grants affect this project. One is the ready grant through Northwest Indiana Forum. They need a lot of commitment by year end from the city. Um that would come from the mayor's office if this council approves. And the second grant as well, they're all looking for um commitments now towards the end of the year. Like I said, it's moving very quickly and if our city can't commit match funding, then they'll move on to another community that's part of the Marquette Greenway. The money is earmarked for the market. You're welcome.
Thank you for that. Yes, Councilman Paul.
Um I guess this is a uh funding question on the lines of uh Councilwoman Tillman's question. So we budgeted money and we're obligated by uh to one point two.
Mm-hmm.
And has there been any communication with the Health Foundation about getting funding or are you gonna go that route?
Yes, absolutely. So Don and I will, I'm sorry, Mr. Preszulinski and I will be meeting with the Healthcare Foundation um on another project we're working on, so we'll certainly tie that in as well.
Yep.
Um Michigan City hasn't gotten a lot of capital funding from them and I've met with them twice in the last year and they're entrusted in our recreation needs in Michigan City, so absolutely. I'll approach.
Well, the reason I bring that up is because I want to remind everybody that we got a a pretty hefty commitment on uh that four hundred and twenty acres on the east side of Michigan City on delivering water and sewer and the timeframe is coming to an end here in uh twenty twenty three. So w- we have to watch our monies very tightly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions for Shannon? All right, with that being said, any additional comments from the public? Any additional comments from the public? All right, thank you. Comments from the council?
Thank you.
Comments from the council?
Maybe none. Um Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Dabney.
I will second.
Second by Councilwoman Dany Jigus, um Ms. Nyla upon the vote.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Preszulinski.
Nay.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preszulinski.
Nay.
Ms. Tillman.
Nay.
And Mr. Dabney.
Hi.
We have six in favor and three opposed.
All right, the resolution passes. Ms. Nyla, the next resolution and by title only.
Resolution um by title only, a resolution increasing and decreasing certain appropriations within the budget of the City Hall Department of General Fund one zero zero one for the year twenty twenty two in Michigan City, Indiana. And this was introduced by Mr. Don Preszulinski.
All right, are there any comments from the sponsors?
Yeah, um and what's this deals with is uh the janitor here in City Hall uh has been required to work a lot of overtime in twenty twenty three uh due to the fact that we don't have a nighttime or three to eleven shift uh janitor, so the gentleman has picked up extra hours and extra duties. And all we're doing is covering the cost of the uh overtime that that has cost us. So we're taking from the repair and maintenance building account and increasing the salary and wages overtime by five thousand dollars.
All right, thank you. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Comments from the public? Comments from the council? Comments from the council?
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion by Councilman Don Privilinski and a second by Councilman Paul Privilinski, Ms. Nyla upon the vote.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Preszulinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preszulinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
And Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right, thank you. It passes. Ms. Nyla, if you can read the first ordinance on second reading by title only?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, an ordinance vacating a public alleyway in the city of Michigan City located north of Alfred Avenue, south of Joy Street, west of Jeffers and Street and east of Vacated Adams Street. And this is introduced by Ms. Fitzpatrick and Ms. Deitch.
All right, and there will be a formal public hearing tonight and due to um the timing of this, um this is vacation and follows special rules, um we will be having a special meeting next week to um place this on third reading along with um the the map uh the redistricting. So we will have to have a special meeting because there's a timing issue with vacations. Um any comments from the sponsors? Any comments from the sponsors? Yeah, um and this is the um the location where Ivy Tech and the new Health Link will be um here in Michigan City. Um are there any comments from the public?
Yeah, Tommy Claver thirteen sixteen Old Street. This is a simple thing. He's really go through. That property is all tax exempt. It's owned by Ivy Tech. When Health Link takes over, it's still gonna be tax exempt. So this is basically just the alleyway that cuts right through the middle of the property. It really has no value to the city. I really think this needs to go through. There's really a lot of exciting development going on with the new Ivy Tech campus at Ivy Tech. That's basically the converted uh Kingwood Mental Hospital. I think that'll be a lot better to have a new Ivy Tech campus and with the new hospital is we're making slow progress on the modern mall. They're gonna be putting some residential units for the Marquette Theaters, Cable and Zones, all that. And I'm not, but I'm sure we've all found out by now, but getting it on, we're on Coles bringing it up, we're gonna be getting the new Boys and Girls Club. Super, super excited about that. Thank you.
Thank you. And this is a formal public hearing. Any any additional comments from the public? This is a formal public hearing. Comments from the public?
Hi, Ernie Hollahan, three oh two Gladys Street. I agree with Tommy. We need to shoot this on through. They already got all the trees tore out there and working already, so. And it's it's gonna be a good thing because they're gonna have health plus psychiatric help there and everything, which we need in Michigan City bad.
Awesome, thank you. Any additional comments? Formal public hearing is now closed. Any comments from the council? Any comments from the council? This will be held over for a special meeting um at the designated time that we decide before we all leave here um this evening. All right. Thank you. Um Next ordinance on second reado by of reading by title only.
An ordinance on second reading by title only amending section ninety-eight dash eighty-six and ninety-eight dash eighty-seven on the Michigan City Municipal Code known as a waiver of annexation and connection of adjacent municipality and consent to merger, amend and annexation conditions and procedures. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch, Ms. Jigus, Mr. Don Preszulinski, Mr. Fitzpatrick, Mr. Paul Preszulinski, Mr. Dabney and Mr. Simmons.
Any comments from the council? Any comments from the council, from the sponsors, I mean? All right, any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? All right, comments from the council. Are there any comments from the council? I I will say that um this is just the amendment based on the workshop that we had a few weeks ago um in reference to uh adjacent municipalities. And um it it was to clean up some language that um was around de-annexation and to make sure that um all our neighboring communities understood how this impacts them or doesn't impact them. Um and this will be held, you it's, I guess it's a pleasure of council. You want this at the special meeting? Or would you like to move on to um third reading? It's at the pleasure of the council.
I move on now. We have third reading this evening.
For. All right, we have um a motion by Councilman Don Privilinski and a second by Council um and Jane Simmons, um Ms. Nyla upon the vote.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Preszulinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jigus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preszulinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
And Mr. Matt.
Bye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right, now if you would read this by title only on third reading.
An ordinance on their reading by title only amending section ninety-eight dash eighty-six and ninety-eight dash eighty-seven of Michigan City Municipal Code known as waiver and annexation and connection of adjacent municipality and consent to merger and amend the annexation conditions and procedures. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch, Ms. Jigus, Mr. Don Preszulinski, Mr. Fitzpatrick, Mr. Paul Preszulinski, Mr. Dabney and Mr. Simmons.
Right, thank you. Any comments from the sponsors? Comments from the sponsors? Comments from the pub- comments from the public? Comments from the public? Comments from the council?
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion by Councilman Don Privilinski and a second by Councilman Paul Privilinski, Ms. Nyla upon the vote.
Mr. Don Preszulinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jigus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preszulinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Uh Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
And Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right, thank you. It passes. Ms. Nyla, our last, it's our last one? Yes, our last um ordinance on second reading.
An ordinance on second reading by title only amending the redistricting of six legislative wards of Michigan City Common Council established by section forty-two dash thirty-two of Municipal Code of Michigan City, Indiana. This is introduced by Ms. Deitch and Mr. Paul Preszulinski.
All right, thank you. Any comments from the sponsors? Any comments? Mr. Privilinski, no comments?
The only comment that I have to make is that um we have had some additional bigger maps made so the public and the uh council can see the contiguous streets and identify the maps that are in place. I think it was very helpful, even though they're, you know, kind of huge, but that was made by our uh G I F department. Thank you, Tony. But I would uh want everybody to study the maps for a while and I I we uh President Nelson Deitch and myself, we have spoken about this and uh I believe we're gonna have a special meeting next week and everyone needs to contact the president to uh tell them when they're available to.
Yeah.
Pay us.
And also a memo came out on December sixteenth from um our attorney um in reference to um questions raised by the members of council uh with the city's ability to maintain a second-class city's classification in event of documented population decrease. So the city of Michigan City has had the population under thirty-four thousand for several decades now and the legislation has um has um put it in the hands of the council um if they would want to do something like that. But if you read the memo, everybody should have had a copy of it. Um and it talked about the question um being raised on classifications of cities. And one of the things that um is very clear um with the language is that cities who have had that population in the past will not lose their classification, even if the population drops before th- under thirty-four thousand as reflected in the U.S. Census. And there is a vote by the common council that will have to change that designation. So we just want to make sure that people understand that um case law and the senior document um provides um that it's up to a city council to designate or create an ordinance if they ever wants to change. Now, I will say the impact that that would have on a city like us is to the negative, is more cons than there is pros. So we would lose money for CDBG. Um there's fundings and different brands that we wouldn't be available for. Um but if you have any questions, you can reach out to to um our attorney. And like I said, we've been um, our population has been under the threshold of a second class or actually, we've had the population of a third-class city since the eighties. So um it's up to us if we ever decided to do something like that, but it wouldn't be in our best interest. So you all received that memo on memo on December sixteenth um from uh from our attorney. And I don't know um with this process, if Attorney Jewel, Attorney Harris, if you could share um why this has to happen every ten years?
Sure, um the law requires that in a year following a census, which occurs every ten years, uh the council has to relook uh again at all the the ward boundaries to determine that the population is evenly balanced. So that's the whole purpose. The census comes out, you get the following year to take a look at what those census numbers look look like and make a determination as to what action needs to be taken in order to make sure that the city is equal evenly uh distributed, that population is evenly distributed and you've got an equal representative form of government. This redistricting process uh nor uh the census that occurs every ten years cannot result in the city losing its classification as a second-class city. It's not something that can happen automatically. The law, it just doesn't read that way. If there's ever a time that that is considered, it's something that will have to come before the council and and a majority of the council need to adopt adopt an ordinance, either taking the classification down to third class or transitioning to a county. Need to adopt, adopt an ordinance, either taking the classification down to third class or transitioning to a town. But um as the council president indicated, there's no advantage uh to the municipality to do that. So that's why you don't see that happen ever.
Um, any questions for the attorney? I see a light on.
Quickly, so just.
Yes.
I guess from my own uh information. To go from uh second class to third class, we, we lose two council seats. Uh we lose the clerk's office and the controller's office and whatever other.
Gee, yeah, it, it would be a complete change to the formal.
Yeah, it'd be more like, like Laporte. They have like seven council members. They don't have a controller's office. They don't have a clerk's office. It's not elected position. It's.
It'd be a streamlined form of, form of government.
Yeah.
Much, much smaller, much different in operation. Yes.
Yeah.
With that change, we have less wards also.
Yes.
Same kind of like.
Yeah, and I, I didn't find any case law that showed anybody that switched. From second to third. It's always third to second.
Correct. Everyone's trying to move the other direction. Uh if no one tried to move the other.
Down, no benefit. Alright, um any um comments from the public? Comments from the public?
Yeah, Tommy Klawick, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. Yeah, I learned about, about where the cities, the first class and the third ward and. A third class, our three classes of our cities when I remember learning it from a board board woman. He used to be a panelist on News and Views. He. Constantly taught by, you know, he was a professor of political science at Purdue North Cent, Purdue Northwest. Um, yeah, it was uh, I've actually had a conversation with Mayor Oberly about that and there's actually only two hundred cities besides Michigan City that. Has a still out functions under the status of second, second class. I haven't underneath thirty five thousand. One is East Chicago and the other is Marion. Uh so, you know, we're kinda unique. We're actually the third small city that falls in that, but even with our prison inmates, so. Yeah, it's like I said, it's probably best, our best state is the city of the second class. Thank you.
Any additional comments from the public? Any additional comments?
Yes, Ernie Hallahan, I'm, I'm totally lost on this. I'm confused. Is this where you're taking the prison out of the?
So there's a couple of things. We had a workshop um. Two weeks ago, three weeks ago, and um so this happens every ten years. So this, this is something that happens every single time and there uh was discussion at the. At that workshop on the prison population. So even with the prison population, our population has. Has stood under thirty four thousand people and the legislature last year changed it. For this past year to thirty four thousand. It used to be thirty five thousand. Um so even when our prison population. We've, we've always still been under the threshold of um being a second class city. So what that does, if you look at one of the wards, the third ward. Including the prison population, what happens is instead of it being spread, I'm just gonna use round numbers. Five thousand, every ward has five thousand people in it. So the, the third ward would actually have five thousand people in it, but of that would be two thousand prisoners. That don't have the vote. So that's, that's the, in a nutshell, that's what it is. So. This organization reached out in November that does this for multiple cities and Attorney Harris was in contact with them. And her name is Kelsey Kaufman and her, and um I forgot the name of the organization. But they provided us with multiple maps. Some are like.
Okay.
Very um. All over the place.
I miss with Mr. Fitzpatrick there. I don't wanna see anyone lose their jobs.
And right, right. So, so the maps.
Already lost too many in this city alone.
Right.
With no industry here.
Right, so this has nothing to do with jobs. This is about the redistricting that we gotta get done. So um it's mandatory that we get it done before the end of the year. So there are a lot of cities across the state. That are going through this process. So um we all received multiple maps. At the last workshop, there was a recommendation by Mr. Privile, well Paul Privilinski. He, one of the maps, there's one there. With the prison and one without the prison that um is there. And those will be available in the clerk's office because we're gonna have a special meeting next week to decide on which maps. Um which map the council's gonna decide on which one they wanna use. Um so it'd be up to the council to. To choose which they wanna print, you know, which one they would want to do. But one of the things that has to happen is uh we will need um some type of motion to be able to um. Uh make amendments on third reading um for, for this as well. Um. So, but that's it in a nutshell. It's not that it's mandatory.
Eliminate no council.
No. And something else.
Yes. So just a, also as a point of clarification, the, the conversation about uh not including the prison population. Is solely for the purpose of redrawing the boundaries of the wards. It doesn't remove the population from the results of the census. It doesn't lower the population of the city at all. It's only for the purpose of doing this redrawing process.
Okay.
You know, they, we're not erasing them. They don't not exist.
Right.
They'll do for purposes of the census. It's just for the map. Doesn't make a lot of sense that they don't vote. They don't receive city services, etc.
I, I understand that. They, they are.
They are there.
Citizens of Michigan City. A lot of them are full-time citizens.
Right.
Because they're lifers, but I, I realize they can't vote.
Right.
I understand.
But that was the conversation that was at the workshop too is that um they shared that local municipalities have um. The trend has been that local municipalities have pulled the prisoners out because it doesn't impact. Any of the um, yeah, and even with the prison population, we still are under the, the thirty four thousand.
I don't know what the census is. I haven't heard it.
Yeah.
But I know it's dwindling.
Yep, it's thirty two thousand with the.
I, I was totally assured that they were gonna get industry here, so I'm hoping they're turn right. We really need it.
Thank you, Mr. Ernie.
Oh, Tommy Klawick, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I like to deal with those prison inmates. We also, the city also receives tax credits from actually being there. Um, uh that's why I feel really we should close the prison. I feel if we do close the prison, that's still gonna be state property. The prison gonna be leased out. I feel they'll end up having out of state prisoners housed at the prison. So that's just my, one of my two cents for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Klawick. Any additional comments from the public? Alright, comments from the council? Yes, Councilman Paul.
Um, also with additional that not only would the uh. Uh if, if we. Would even contemplate changing the form of city government. The uh council would have to be uh reestablished. We'd lose, I think. A councilman at large and two uh council people. So it would be more condensed. So anyway, the, the whole purpose of why I looked at the map. And I was looking at all the different maps and. I thought that the uh M C N P one was more uh. And that, not condensed, but more um. It's not concise. I'm trying to find a contiguous of uh. Previous maps that were gonna amend. And I thought it, it wouldn't confuse a lot of people. You know, there's gonna have to be uh some precincts. Uh where they vote, but they can still vote where they were voted before. Cause we can make sure that we talk to the voter registration board, so there isn't a bunch of confusion. You know, when we, when it's time to vote, that these people don't have to switch uh precinct there or voting areas. You know, thank you.
And, and just to add to Councilman Paul, uh that one that you um recommended had the least. Change in precincts of all of the maps that um were provided to us. And there were eight different maps. But as the council is seeing, they're, they're very um uh interesting uh map, so. Um. Attorney um Harris, as far as the ordinance and how you have it, how you have it um. Said, um I know we will need to um be, to be able to make amendments on third reading. Um but my question is, we know that our ordinance is very detailed.
It is.
So. My question is, how do you, what do you recommend?
So the, the ordinance that you see in your packet now um basically is in a similar format to what was adopted. Uh previously, you know, ten years ago and what's reflected in section forty two dash thirty two of the city code. And it goes basically street by street to outline what the boundaries of each ward is. And your new ordinance is intended to read the same way. With the exception that if you look after each section, I include also including or accepting in the event it's. Almost the exactly the same with the exception of a street or if you add in a street or add in a precinct, we can add that language. Um, so that's one option and that's the format that it's currently in now. Depending upon what you decide to do, we may need to change that a little bit and not do the also including or accepting. And just rewrite the narrative before that, cause it might be simpler. I just don't know which map you're gonna adopt yet. And I'll draft it accordingly and that's what you'll see at the special meeting is language one way or the other. I just don't, don't know how drastic the changes will be until you finish this discussion and then make a final decision. So I'd recommend that you make a decision on which map you think causes the least amount of disruption and what you're comfortable with. And when that happens, I can kinda tell you what I think that, what that ordinance is gonna look like at the special meeting. More likely than I, my preference would be to just rewrite the narrative and not say it's this, except. This section or also including this. I'd rather just rewrite the whole narrative and then it reads what it is without exception. That's my preference.
Yes, Councilman Paul.
Um. With uh. The comments from Mr. Harris, do you think that we should schedule a workshop? Before the meeting to discuss it and then go into a, a meeting. Af- after that and uh vote on it, cause I don't, I think that to, we've. We'll get the consensus and then take a few minutes and I don't know, Joel can.
Yeah.
You know.
So I think from there. Think it all depends on what you think you need in order to make your final decision, or do you feel like you're not there yet?
Yeah.
Well, that's the only challenge. Until you have an idea of what, which one of the maps you're gonna select, I can't draft the ordinance.
Right.
So if you were to have a workshop and then immediately have the meeting. It doesn't give you.
Immediately have.
Oh, okay.
Having a pause in there and that's uh.
It's gonna take me more than a pause to drive. Yeah, okay. Yeah, it's gonna take.
Well. I guess under uh. I don't know if it's legal that we can ask for consensus.
I think what we would probably need is a motion for an amendment for one of those, to select one of those and then we can. And then that's when, is that what will make it move forward?
Well, I think it's worth having some additional conversation even now, even tonight as to of the maps that you see, which one tends to make the most sense. And just getting an understanding of what your thoughts are lets me know a little bit of what you're, what you're thinking. Um but back to your point about a workshop, can you have one? Sure. But I would still need a day or two before you had the special meeting to finalize the orders. So whichever way you wanna do it is fine with me. But if you're having a workshop, I need at least two days, because if you look at the narrative. For each ward, it's, it's long. It's like a legal description and you wanna make sure it's. Yeah, you wanna make sure it's made.
You done?
Let's. Ask, ask each member.
He said.
I know, I know where, I know where I'm at in this uh discussion.
Alright, so I guess my question is um the recommend, at our last workshop. Um the map that was um. There's two up there that um that are huge. Um there's one with the prison population, one without. Um the one without the pri- prison population. Um the various, these are the most contiguous. Um of all of the maps, if you look at them. Um and these are the same maps that you all received a couple of weeks ago. Um these aren't maps that are brand, brand new. These are the ones that um were printed and given to you um to review. Um a new set was placed in your mailbox for you to take a look at, but they're the same exact maps that were provided and you could see. Um from looking through all of the um maps and I don't know if you have any questions, that uh some of them. Have a lot of changes to precincts to um. I think the one that um there was some, a somewhat of consensus at the workshop. Was the M C N P one that had the least amount of change to precincts. Um. And yeah, it was M C N P one. There was a narrative, um and I think. Um Dahlia, you have the one that has all the information on it from the last one. Can I, can I see that real quick so I can share it? So.
It's M C P one.
M C N P one, only one precinct split. However, slightly not contiguous due to precincts thirteen and twelve being a separate wards. They had only one precinct split. But if you go through all of these and um of what was submitted um through the clerk's office. They get very detailed and um I just wanna say that. With um the new map with the prison population.
Right.
I, let me, let me share this with the public real quick. The new map with, with the prison population, there are no split precincts. All the ward five nearly cuts ward four in half. That's with the pri- prison population. The M C N P one that was recommended, it had somewhat of consensus, only has one precinct split. Uh precinct two. And then you go through all the other maps and it gets very detailed real quick. M C N P two, five split precincts with a bunch of different things. M C N P three, two precincts split, not fully contiguous. Um, M C N P four, four precincts split. M C N P five, three precincts split. M C N P six, four precincts. It goes on and on. The only one that has one precinct split. Is the one that has somewhat of consensus and that was the M C N P one. And that is up on the map right there. To change college.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, yeah, if I may add. To that M C N P one map. Uh the way I see the differences between the wards, uh the highest ward being. Uh ward six of five thousand one hundred and forty four. And the other one, the lowest would have been ward three at four hundred, at four thousand eight hundred and seventy seven. So there's only a difference, I think that's uh two hundred and eighty six. Votes? No, yeah.
No, it's on population.
Pardon?
It's on population, not voters.
Yes, it's population.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, it's on population. So that's what, that's what I'm saying. It's evened out. The best out of all the best, I believe. Yep.
Yeah, and the devi- yeah, the deviation is strictly around population and um. And what I was told legal by legal. Legally, we have to be under ten percent deviation. Um, as we go through this process, so as long as it, it falls under ten percent. We're safe on whatever we uh approve. So. Any additional comments? Yes, Mr. Matt.
Got him. Well, a statement for uh the public uh and a question for uh. Jewel, Mr. Harris here. Um the definition of contiguous, I'm, I'm just pulling this off of uh. Uh Google here and it's uh being in actual contact, touching along a boundary or a point adjacent. Use the, use of angles uh next or near to in time sequence or connected or touching. Now, when, when I've seen redistricting and I've said this at the previous meeting, um. To me, it's always used in germinating. You see these snake, snake looking things and they're. To me, it's always used in Jeremand. You see these snake snake looking things and they're 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 taking the word contiguous. And turning into what they want. They'll they'll use uh. Uh poverty numbers, for example, to get a map that. Meets the word contiguous, but it's also serving another purpose. And you'll see that in a lot of states if you look into this a little bit. So I wanted the public to understand what that word exactly means. And we don't have those challenges. Looking at this, these these boards look. Even blocks like they've always been and that is the. Goal of a a real un-Jeremandy uh map is to make, you know, neighborhoods that are. Similar, you know, in location, especially proximity, stay that way. How are we using that? When we use the term, and this is a part for Mister Harris, uh when we're using the term. You know, the deviation part is just flat out population. Um the deviation from this ward having. Two thousand less and I want to thank you for explaining that uh. Um prison population because I thought it was impacting and something else. It it as long as that is in our next census. Um I I I can go with that. So thank you for that, but. It says some of these maps are less contiguous than others. What are what what is being used for the term on these maps?
Yeah, so for our purpose, we're using contiguous to mean that any redrawing of these boundaries. Is uh being done so that you whatever the addition or subtraction is from that particular ward. Is adding or subtracting something that contiguous to the current boundaries that exist. As opposed to reaching out to something that's not contiguous in order to add it within that uh ward or subtract it from that ward.
So we're kind of saying it, how how close can we get to what exists now with?
Yes.
Population.
Yes, we're we're adding or subtracting something across the street, not by street.
No, okay, yeah, thanks, sir.
Yep.
Counselor Paul, did you have a question? Counselor Paul, I you have your light on. I didn't know. Um yes, Councilwoman Gigas.
Yes, I I mean, I'm very comfortable with approving this map, though of the first one, um whatever that's called. Yeah, because um I mean, it seems to be least disruptive, most contiguous. I don't see how we're going to come up with some kind of big idea. In the next few days that we're gonna say, oh, my gosh, no, it's not this one. It's another one. So I I mean, I think we should. Approve this as much as we can today and then, of course, we'll have that special meeting to to finalize. That's that's kind of what I'm thinking.
Is that a motion?
You don't need one.
We don't?
You don't need one.
Awesome.
Yes, you don't need that, but as long as there's not someone that feels strongly the other direction. That means, you know, you've had second reading, we'll still have that special meeting to adopt it because you don't have the final version of it in front of you.
Okay.
Now I've got some direction on how to draft it unless there's another council member that feels strongly otherwise. That's M C N P one.
Okay. M C N P one, what I have in front of me is not the same as what's up there. So which one is correct?
I'm not sure what. Can I be excused?
Yes, 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 please do, Councilman Paul.
The color for the fourth board is a little bit different on that now. I don't know if that's the one you offered off.
Yeah. They're they're completely different because I'm looking at.
Yeah.
So these were printed by, so um thank you to Tony Basil. He printed these um maps for us, these G I maps with G I S maps. With the actual streets on it.
So is that the actual?
And see, we'll check the map. And the one that I'm holding on to is that.
Okay.
First ward was drawn out, edited on this map. And what what you're seeing is you're seeing a much bigger printout. In fourth ward. So we've got the um. That had on the uh.
What's this one?
Terror signals, terrorist anchors out there. On the uh south end of town. All the way to Cleveland. And down Paz Road. This is the high school area down here and this area is the. Yeah, annexed uh housing project down there. And I believe that this portion, which is added. I believe if I'm not mistaken, that might be. Uh some of the land that was annexed.
Yeah, it is. And what we'll do is these two big, these this map will be in the council study. So that if anybody would like to see it, can I do that or what would you like me to do?
The council, council study is full of. Because you're carpeting.
So maybe I can hang it somewhere?
Yeah, we can put it out in the hall because we're gonna be working in the mayor's conference.
Okay, good. So maybe we'll hang hang these somewhere. Okay, good. So we'll hang them for the public and then um we'll have paper copies in the clerk's office. Um for that and then at the special meeting, um we will uh move forward with that. Yes, we can do it on the webpage. That would be great. That's probably a better idea. That's a better idea, actually. Thank you.
I'm okay with that version.
I'm okay with it. All right, thank you, um Councilman Paul. So we will.
North, south, east and west.
Thank you, Councilman Paul. And um I would um ask all council members of Tuesday at five thirty um will be okay. No, so I'll have to check with Mister Mack and Mister Privolinsky on the on the time. And we'll go from there. Six thirty. So we'll we'll um I'll talk to you too. Okay, so six thirty on Tuesday, six thirty on Tuesday. No, six thirty? Okay, well, six thirty, we'll plan for six thirty, though. All right, um. Any additional comments from the council? I think we have a path forward. All right, this will be held over for third reading at our special meeting. That will have two agenda items next Tuesday at six thirty. All right, thank you. All right.
The motion to make amendment.
Oh, yes, we do. We do need a motion to make.
Make this motion to uh amend the redistricting map. On third reading.
All right, we have a motion. Support. And we have a second by Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick, Miss Nileup on the vote.
Mister Simmons.
Hi.
Simmons.
Hi.
Miss Jacobs.
Aye.
Mister Paul Preselinski.
Aye.
Miss Tillman.
Aye.
Mister Dabney.
Aye.
Mister Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mister Matt.
Aye.
Miss Deitch.
Aye.
And Mister Don Preselinski.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no.
Thank you. This will be held over for third reading at our next special meeting. All right, unfinished business. Um we have nominations. The council has one appointment to the Michigan City. Women's Com- uh Commission representing a non-for-profit organization. Um expires twenty twenty December twenty first, twenty twenty and the incumbent is Miss Nicole Coleman. Have we received any?
We have not received any.
All right, thank you. Um the next one, um the the common council has one appointment. To the Michigan City Urban Enterprises Association. Um and the term will begin immediately expires twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. Have we had any? Any um? Any uh applications?
No, we have not received any.
Okay. The next one, the council has one Democratic point into the Fire Merritt Commission, term expires December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Incumbent is Desiree Nichols. Do we have any um applications?
Uh we received one from Tommy Kavalek, uh one from Daryl Borton and one from Mark Miller.
What was the last name?
Mark Smiller.
Mark Miller. I will open it up for nominations.
Madam President.
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Tommy Kalavich.
We have a a nomination for Tommy Kalavich. Is there support? And we have a support from Councilwoman Tillman. Is are there any additional nominations?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Mark Miller.
Um um is there support for uh Mark Miller?
Ah, second that.
Second that. Um additional.
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Daryl Borton.
Yes, and we have Daryl Borton. Is there support for Daryl Borton? So second for Daryl Borton. All right. With that being said, um now the vote will be held at the next council meeting. We have. Uh Mister Tommy Kalavich and Mister Mark Miller. Um that will be um on the uh vote for the Fire Merritt Commission. All right, nominations. The council has one appointment to the Veterans Commission, representing a member of the service that deals with PTSD. As far as December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two and the incumbent is Keith Deveraux. Um do we receive any paperwork? I think I think I saw from Mister Deveraux.
We did. It was it did come in late, but we did receive it.
All right, thank you. Um are there, is there a nomination for um is that the only one we received?
Yes, it is.
Um is there a nomination for Mister Deveraux?
Yeah, Madam President, I wish you uh nominate Keith Deveraux, second that.
All right, we have support for that and. That expires on December thirty-first as well. Um I may go ahead since these expire, put them on the agenda for next week to vote. Yeah, since we're gonna be here. Yes, um now we have the vote. The council has two appointments to the Redevelopment Commission, representing the council. Term expires um December thirty-first. Uh we have Kathy Kathy Dennis, Angie Nelson Deitch. And Miss Stacy Dudley and um for the vote, um you have two votes um for your appointments. Um so um when we call the roll, um you will give your two. And um Miss Nileup, I just asked that you um write down the names. If there's anybody who has majority. Or one or two, those would be the, if not, if there's a tie. Uh for one of the positions, um we will go to another vote. Is that correct, Mister Mister Harris?
Yeah.
All right, so when your name is called, you will say two names for your vote. And then um she will tally and then we will determine if we need to have a second vote. Exactly, that's what we'll do.
I would just recommend going slow, this is a little bit normal.
Yes. We will go very slow so that you can have time to write.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll we'll let you do that.
Thank you.
That's that is no problem.
Okay, Miss Jacobs.
I'd like to vote for Dennis and Deitch.
Okay, Mister Paul Preselinski.
Uh I'd like to vote for uh Dudley and. Deitch.
Miss Tillman.
I'd like to nominate Dennis and Deitch.
Mister Dabney.
Deitch and Dennis.
Mister Fitzpatrick.
Uh Dennis and Deitch.
Mister Matt.
Dudley and Dennis.
Miss Deitch.
Deitch and Dennis.
Uh Mister Don Preselinski.
Uh Dennis and Deitch.
And Mister Simmons.
Dennis and Deitch.
Okay, uh the final, the highest two is um Angie and Miss Kathy Dennis.
All right, congratulations, Miss Dennis. And um I didn't ask you if you had anything you want to say, but um congratulations. All right, um comments from the public. Any comments from the public? Just state your name and address.
Tommy Kalavich, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I think we all be remiss if we didn't wish Captain Jeff Leneski, our Traffic Division Commander, the happiest retirement. Uh now he's not leaving law enforcement. He's gonna continue to service as a deputy for the La Porte County Sheriff's Office. So he's turned into his Michigan City blue for La Porte County brown. I also want to wish uh our former police chief, Gian Campbell, on his new position. He now works for the La Porte County Juvenile Services. That's kind of a natural fit for him. I think everybody knows it. Before he was the police chief, he was our school resource officer. You know, he was all my kids, us are of Michigan City High School. But the whole time they went through and they all loved him all the ends of the earth. So he's gonna be great for those kids. Um I'm really happy about the new uh Boys and Girls Club. This is gonna be, they've. Talked about the the Borazonian appeals. They just unveiled all their plans, thirty-five thousand square foot facility. Gonna be on Cool Spring behind the old uh Y M C A. They they're gonna acquire that property, uh twelve acres back there. Um I think we need to give them all the support we can, probably with some community financing grant money. Uh maybe set up a plan like they have with the zoo where they get the first hundred thousand, even give them another hundred thousand too. Sometimes I feel we take better care of animals at the zoo than we own, than we do our own children. Well, um just wish everybody a happy new year, happy head, merry Christmas. Thank you for hearing the nomination. I. And we'll talk about that at the next meeting. Tha- tha- thank you.
Thank you, Mister Kalavich.
President Rodney McQuomey, Michigan City Housing Authority. I'm here to uh. Let everyone know and give an update to what's going on with the Michigan City Housing Authority. We have control over our housing authority. We have cleaned up a lot of the corruption and the nonsense that's been going on. Um we're moving forward. We will, hopefully, we we breaking ground on a new office. Uh it probably will be on Cedar Street. Um Mister Harris has done a great job for us. Um. Also, my the other fellow commissioners has as well. So just want everybody to know that we have cleaned it up. And we're moving forward and we're making a lot of progress. Thank you.
Mister McComey, is there anything going on at the for the holidays um at the um? Like you on the Boulevard, do you know?
No, I don't know of anything. No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tommy Kalavich, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. Yeah, for that to mention, um happy anniversary to me, uh January third. It's gonna be my thirtieth anniversary of being a La Porte County resident and also a thirty-year resident of being the Michigan City Area Schools. It's November. I'm gonna be a be my tenured anniversary being a civil city resident. So very proud of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Kalavich. Any any additional happy anniversary, any additional comments from the public? Any additional comments from the public? All right, any comments online? All right, comments from the council. Yes, Miss Gigas.
Thank you. Uh I have a couple of things. Uh there's a contact information sheet for for neighborhoods. We had a meeting at the Elson Grove Homeowners Association. Uh you know, in collaboration with the police and several council members, Mister Dabney was there, Miss Deitch was there. And people had questions on where where do you call if there's something going on. So for vacant properties. What do you do if you see vacant properties? If there's someone in there or if you think people have been in there, uh broken windows, graffiti, abandoned vehicles, dog waste. So it's a document that tells you like who to call when. And uh I have put it up on my website and we're gonna distribute it through the uh Elson Grove. Uh neighborhood groups. So if anybody is interested, take a look at my website, dahliajigas.com. I have it on the front page. Uh a second thing is the League of Women Voters is planning to have a city council candidate workshop. So this is to encourage people to run for city council. People think it's some kind of a mysterious thing that, you know, only people with special skills can do. But uh you know, I hope this will encourage people, you know, younger people, people who want to get involved. To uh kind of investigate what does it take to be a city council member because it's really not that much. So the workshop is planned on January ninth at six P M. It's open to everybody. It will be at the E O C down here and look for more information, you know, in the media about this. So thanks. And and happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you, Councilman Dabney.
Uh real quick announcement to the various groups that we have in the first ward, the Eastport Neighborhood Group. Uh Elston Grove, Canada Neighbors and the Sheridan Beach Homeowners. Been a lot of questions regarding um. What's going on with Water Tower Park, uh the Oasis Splash Pad. what's going on with Water Tower Park, uh, the Oasis Splash Pad. And then paving, which streets are gonna be paved in, in, in our areas uh, over in the First Ward. Along with the contact sheet that uh, Dahlia talked about, that will be going out uh, to all of the groups in the email. Uh, that I have set up for all of those uh, those different groups there, but I'm also gonna post it on Facebook as well, to the personal page. Michigan City, uh, the, the council page, and then as well as the Eastport Neighborhood page. And I wanted to find out, uh, where can we find out, is there any way to find out the corruption that was going on with the housing authority? How do we, are we able to get that information, that public information? With the housing, the corruption that was happening in the housing authority? Is anywhere I could reach out to, to find out about the corruption?
Is it a FOIA request?
Yeah, I don't know what kind of response you would get from that FOIA request, with it being general as corruption, but I can tell you that yeah, there was mismanagement in the housing authority previously, and even now is under a zero threshold because right, that's due to the former mismanagement. That might be what was meant by the, the general term corruption, so uh, there's information that's available. You just have to be, you know, particular in terms of what information is being requested.
Okay, would you be able to explain it to me? When, if I contact you, or do I need to go through it?
Yeah, okay, yes, fine, huh?
Um, thank you. Uh, Councilman Tillman.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, just the PSA, just to let all the residents and in the Fifth Ward and the community, that as you know, that we have a Dunkin' Donuts that will be opening up real soon, and I did speak with the owner, um, Mr. Patel, a few weeks ago. And they're anticipating, hopefully, within the second week of mid-January, but depending on the weather right now, they have um, start pouring in the driveway. It's, the outside is pretty much complete, so I'm looking forward to it, and that's a easy stop. It's gonna be a drive-through, not a walk-in, so something needed besides just McDonald's coffee.
Thank you, yes, Councilman, um, Simmons.
Yes, I'd just like to give a brief summary of uh, Michigan City Police Department, uh, last commission meeting, uh, I attended last week. Corporal Kennedy was presented with a fifteen year service pen. Letter of commendations, Officer, School, School Resource Officer, Sergeant Wadelski, Officer Fletcher, uh, for arrest of a juvenile for threats of bringing a firearm to the high school. Uh, they received uh, letters of commendation. As well as Officer Christopher Mans for continued extra work as an evidence tech, although not assigned to the Bureau. Uh, it's just a pure case of uh, service above and beyond, because they do not have a specialized a tech assigned, so he's doing this on his own time. Uh, Officer Brock Moore, Officer Chris Mann, Officer Renee Lozano, Officer Max Fer- Fer- Fernandez, and Officer Josh Callahan for two subjects, arrested for illegal carrying of a, a firearm, one modified as a machine gun. Uh, drug charges as well as an outstanding arson warrant. There was also promotions. Uh, uh, promotion for, uh, fill the vacancy for Lieutenant Peter Trowski, who will retire uh, effective Friday, July, I mean, Friday, December the second. Uh, Sergeant Mike King was promoted to lieutenant. Corporal Nick Kraus was promoted to sergeant. Uh, Detective Mark Giletti was promoted to corporal. Currently in an emergency hire for lateral transfer. This is uh, something that they just instituted that an officer from another department can do, which will allow them to do a lateral transfer into uh, the Michigan City Police Department. If he has the academy certifications, uh, this will be their first uh, hire with a lateral transfer. And the deadline for applications for lateral transfer uh, is Saturday, January the seventh, two thousand twenty-three. I'd also like to congratulate uh, Dion Campbell uh, for his new position, as well as Jeff Leonak Luneski. Uh, they're two uh, two of my hires during my uh, tenure as chief. Uh, also, Sir Officer Henderson will be retiring. Uh, I think uh, sometime in January. No, I, I think he'll actually uh, vacation out, so that mean that he'll it might be in two months or so, but it's coming up. He'll be leaving the department. Uh, he'll be part of that uh, fourteen officers short that uh, we're experiencing. Uh, and in closing, I'd just like to wish everyone a Happy New Year, Happy Holiday. Uh, Happy Christmas.
Thank you. All right, who's next? Yes, Councilman Paul Privlaski.
I'd just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and uh, thank everybody who works for and supports the uh, different departments in the city of Michigan City, that uh, you know, a lot, a lot of workers are uh, dedicate a lot of time to their uh, positions. And that might be from the guy, the gentleman who are on the uh, refuge trucks, to the gentleman who are signed up to plow the snow. And I just wanna let all, all the peop-, all the city employees that, I definitely appreciate your service. And I think that the residents of Michigan City do too, and that I'm done, gonna dedicate myself as always, to watch the nickels and the dimes, and I wanna remind everybody going into twenty twenty-three that we have a time limit, that we have to get things done on our responsibility of four hundred and twenty acres that was uh, annexed with no money planned by the city. So, as we go forward, we uh, we all better be cognizant of the fact that it, we have to get this done in twenty twenty-three. And uh, everybody's got wish lists, w- wish lists, lists, excuse me. And uh, I, I just, it's okay, but I can read the numbers, all right? I'm, I'm, I get, I might get confused, but I, on uh, saying a few words, but I know dollar and cent signs, okay? So, when it comes to the bottom line, I take that very, very seriously, and we got a big responsibility. It's about seven or eight million dollar responsibility coming up on us. Thank you.
Councilman Matt?
Uh, I just wanna publicly acknowledge uh, Fay Moore and Alonzo Rupert, uh, the Michigan City House of Hope. Um, they, they run a uh, men's and women's uh, addiction recovery program. And uh, been dealing with Alonzo and Ms. Moore for a while with this, uh. But um, went to a couple meetings recently, uh, looking to expand. Um, Mr. Rupert is looking to uh, be more full-time at this, uh, so the growth can be there. And um, it's, they're just doing great things with uh, small um, small money, I'll just put it that way, but uh, they are committed, uh, serious about it, and uh, I'm just, good luck, and uh, I hope all of these uh, endeavors uh, go further, and it's just beautiful to see, because we could use that in this city. We've got such, in the county. We're one of the highest addiction rates, one of them, in the, in the, in the county. That's one thing, uh, we're known for some things that aren't as accurately numerical than the other ones, and, and addiction is like, you know, serious problem in our area, and it's beautiful to have a group that's actually fighting that, and uh, have a place for people to go to get uh, more, um, one-on-one type of treatment. And uh, personally, I believe that they're actually laying the groundwork to where the country and the state truly takes it seriously and starts investing in it, so that uh, we'll start actually, you know, really trying to make a dent in it, you know, prevention and uh, recovery. Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Councilman Fitzpatrick?
Uh, I have anything to report, but I just wanted to uh, wish everyone happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and uh, you know, another year in the books, serving the residents of Michigan City. And I want everybody to be mindful and take care of each other as we get ready for this big storm that's on the way. Because uh, seems like we could have some record snow and some record low temperatures, so uh, get, get out and get your supplies and stuff now, because you may not be able to at the last minute, so uh, just want to say that real quick, and thanks again.
Yes, thank you. Um, Councilman, I'm Don Privlaski.
Yeah, thanks, Madam President. Uh, number one, what I'd like to do is thank all the non-for-profits in Michigan City that have worked so hard and diligently uh, from Thanksgiving right up until Christmas now. Trying to provide monies, trying to provide food, trying to provide shelter, trying to provide presents for children, and everything that goes along with the holidays, so you know, all the non-for-profits and all the individuals that have dedicated a lot of time and effort in to try and make the holiday special, and to uh, fulfill a big gap and a big need in Michigan City. Uh, the second thing is uh, and we talked about it this evening with the uh, the police department. And that was uh, and Council, uh, President Dyche and myself have talked to the police department about this, and it's a uh, marketing uh, company called The Big Idea, on how to try to help Michigan City recruit police officers, and we met with the uh, staff of the police department and with the uh, organization, The Big Idea, they're out of South Bend. And they put a proposal together, and that proposal was uh, approved yesterday by the Board of Works. So, we're hoping that this new marketing plan is gonna help uh, shore up the shortage in the uh, the police department. Uh, the other thing, it's Strebo Pond, and I know that this was a project that started a year ago, a little bit over a year ago, in September, with uh, lighting issues out there in the parking lots. Uh, where people would get there early in the morning, or stay, you know, later in the evening, to uh, walk. And there were some questionable characters that were hanging around out there, and they had requested for lighting in the parking lot. And the lights have finally been installed by the uh, sanitary district. If you go out there to look at them, the light in the north parking lot is working, the one in the south parking lot is not working. Uh, according to the electricians, the pole was placed in the wrong position for the sun to hit the uh, light itself. So now they gotta move the pole to get in the same degree of the sunshine that's coming in. So uh, that'll be done here uh, shortly. And I wanna thank the uh, sanitary district, Chief Campbell, and his backing of that. Mike Cuss, the superintendent, Mike Malatovic, the uh, president superintendent, and John Gisorich, who was the engineer on that for the sanitary district. Want to thank them for their hard work and effort in getting that done. And also the paysur list. All of us from the, on the, on the city council, I have gotten a paysur list. What the paysur list consists of are all the streets in Michigan City, and how they're rated one through ten, I believe, yeah, one through ten. And one being the worst, ten being the best. And which ones are planning on being paid this coming spring and seven, summer with the uh, community crossings money. I'm not gonna get into it now, but I see questionable ratings on some of these streets and how some of this work was done. So after the first year, I hope we can get into a workshop and get a uh, clear description on how all that was done. And in closing, just wanna wish everybody in Michigan City, all my council colleagues, department heads, administration, and everybody else, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Be safe, enjoy your family, enjoy the little ones, and enjoy the holidays like they're spent but like they're meant to be spent with the family. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, and thank you, council pe-, uh, councilmen and councilwomen. Any additional comments from anybody? All right, I have a couple things, excuse my voice. Um, first, um, congratulations to uh, Kayla Campbell and Paloma Valdez. Uh, Kayla's a, a senior at Michigan City High School, Paloma is um, at Marquette High School. And finally, we have two from schools in Michigan City that won the Lilly scholarships, um, which are full rides. Um, so that's, that's uh, uh, former chief Campbell's uh, daughter Kayla. And you could read all about her. She's on everything and does everything. But um, both of these young women um, have received full Lilly scholarships, which includes everything and the stipend for books, all of that, all that good stuff, so it's good. Um, and congratulations to them. House of Hope, um, for everybody, um, our ARPA portal closes tonight, um, I believe at midnight for grants. Um, today is the deadline, so if you're a last-minute nonprofit asking for money, get your applications in, they're due today, um, tonight at midnight. Um, so if um, you hadn't done it yet, um, ARPA dollars, it's to deck, tonight is it. Uh, it closes at midnight, but one thing I do wanna say, um, please reach out to Mickey Webb, um, with um, our crisis intervention team. Uh, and make sure that um, you're a part of that, and, and understand, we uh, we're members of what we call the Community Anti-Drug Coalition, uh, which provides very good information, but also know we have opioid settlement that we gotta figure out what we're gonna do with that money. Um, and uh, we have time to do that, um, it's just, just putting it out there that it's available at some point. We don't know how yet, we haven't figured that out, but um, Mickey, um, is, she, she runs, she's the director of our Drug Free Task Force. And um, I know, um, we're providing training to local law enforcement agencies in January. And um, it would be a good connection for us to have for the House of Hope. So I just wanted to share that with you. Um, uh, Fly High Youth has moved their, their giveaway to tomorrow because of the storm. It was supposed to be Fri-, not tomorrow, Thursday. It was supposed to be Friday, but the storm is coming um, late on Thursday, so they will be providing like last year, uh, co-, was coats, shoes, gloves, hats, um, um, and then age-appropriate um, gifts. And there were, it was well over a hun- hundred kids that came the last time, so it's gonna be Thursday from eleven until they get rid of everything. And also, um, me and a group of folks are gonna be giving away turkeys at, at the back of the Hope Center from eleven to one. So if you are elderly or don't have transportation, um, you can call two one nine, three two one zero 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 five, or if you belong to a church and they can pick them up. Um, we just need to know that, but we have about a, about two hundred turkeys that are gonna be given away at, on the backside of the Hope program. And then you can bring your families and your kids to come get coats and, and toys. So I just wanna make sure that everybody knows that this is Thursday beginning at eleven o'clock at the Hope program at two 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 McClellan, um, on Thursday, trying to get it done before the storm comes in. Um, and with that, um, I just wanna wish everybody Merry Christmas. Um, uh, Happy Hanukkah, but also, last but not least, so I don't forget, Kwanzaa. Next week, there are family-friendly events happening every single day from December twenty-sixth until uh, January first. And Denise Ship has been coordinating that with several local um, organizations. Sorry, my, I have, my sinuses are crazy, but anyway, I just wanna share that um, there are several organizations that are supporting. Um there are several organizations that are supporting this, there's gonna be Arts and Crafts Daily. Uh from December twenty-sixth through the first, I know today was the last day for students at at school. But from two to four every day at the Hope Center, December twenty-sixth through January one. There's gonna be Arts and Crafts, um they have the Craft Cafe, the Lubazic Center, Eye Blink Pink. Interior Design and Staging, Predictable Foods, it's gonna be a talent show, the Michigan City Soulsteppers, several um. Um doctors that will be providing health information. Um and then um they're gonna, we're gonna focus on the seven principles of Kwanzaa. So from two P M to about seven o'clock every day, there's something that's family-friendly, and there'll be snacks, food. All of those different things, and then on Sunday, January first, beginning at two P M, is the Gospel Celebration. Um at Hope, so there's gonna be a combined choir, spoken word, um praise dancers, uh musical selections, a mime. Um uh uh university contest readings, all those different things will be happening. Um December twenty-sixth through January first. So for those of you with families and kids, it's a great opportunity, free opportunity to do something good. So I wanna wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and I will call for adjournment. All right, thank you, everybody.